Essentially, we're getting rid of this item.
All right.
Good afternoon, board members, staff, members of the audience. We will now commence to start the Board of Supervisors. At the record show that today is March the 4th and the time is 3:00 P. M. There is one change to the agenda. We will be removing item 5D as in dog. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Adams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. The agenda is now approved. And Mr. Martin will lead us in invocation, followed by Mr. Adams will lead us to the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Our Father and our God, Lord, we come before you as your humble servants. Lord, we lift up this county and our great nation to you, Father, and just pray for your leading and guidance. Father, I pray a special blessing on our citizens, our employees, Lord, law enforcement, public safety, Father, and just pray that you will take care of them and all of the work that they do. Father, I pray for the wisdom on this board as we deliberate and guide our county, Lord, and help it to be pleasing to you. And it's in your son's name we ask it and pray. Amen.
Amen.
Direct your attention to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we will now open the floor for citizens' comments. We've got one person signed up, and that's Mr. John Marks. Mr. Marks? Mr. Marks, please just state your name and the district you live in.
My name is John A. Marks, Jr. I live in District 5. Later in this meeting, Davenport will providing an analysis of the county's financial situation in relationship to the construction of Cell 2 at the landfill. As a citizen, my review of the presentation leave me with some serious questions that I hope get answered or clarified during the presentation, such as, one, is the $2.5 million loan from the Gateway Project included in this assessment? As I understand Resolution Number 2023-5-R and the support agreement, the county covers any shortfall in making debt service payments for the Service Authority loan from funds that are included in the county budget, and I've had a briefing on that, so I won't need anything else. This assessment is sub number two. This assessment is based on issuing debt of 5.2 million for the landfill operations for construction of Cell 2. It is my understanding that the estimated cost of Cell 2 is approximately 3.9 million. Excuse me. I also noted that the landfill closure post closure fund is underfunded. So the question I have is the difference between the 5.2 million proposed debt and the 3.9 estimated cost for the cell, too, to be used for the closure slash post closure fund. Number three, something that as a taxpaying citizen I found sort of unnerving was a statement that appeared in two places, on page four and page 12, that the county's governmental operation expenditures are growing at a faster pace than operating revenues. I take that to mean that the county is spending more than it's taking in, and that's not good. One can only deficit spend for so long. On page 10 in the section titled "In the Aggregate," this statement is made, and I quote, "The preliminary results of our analysis reflect that the county may need to identify up to approximately 9 million, or the equivalent of roughly six cent, on the real estate tax base, and resources through a combination of reserves and/or incremental in new revenue sources to afford identified capital needs over the next several years, now through fiscal year 40." End of quote. One would assume that the 5.2 million for the landfill construction is a part of the 18.3 million in identified capital needs over the next several years. So, excuse me. According to sub note three, to achieve the approximately $9 million through real estate taxes would require a 20% real estate tax increase, and this needs to have some real evaluation and consideration by the board. I hope the presentation provides us answers slash clarification of some of these matters. We definitely need the new cell at the landfill. We may not need some of the other capital projects at this time. Thanks. I would like for my comments to be included as a part of the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak? Yes, sir? State your name and the district you live in.
My name is Mark Laberty. I live in Claudia Tucker's district. I would like to address a matter that was brought to the board in recent meetings, and that was regarding a Brady letter, or numerous Brady letters. I'm going to just touch on that at the end here of my presentation. What concerns me greatly is that a week ago, an individual was arrested close to my property and close to Claudia's property for a litany of charges, numerous charges in the past included grand theft, larceny. These are all felonies, and this go around, he was also involved with the bomb making. What we have here is a problem to adjudicate properly, and it starts with the court and it goes down from the court itself. On 11/18/2022, this individual, Timothy Langhorn Walker, was arrested and charged with three grand theft felony charges. I contacted the prosecuting attorney's office. I wanted to know the disposition of this matter. The disposition of this matter was that he was given three 10-year felony conviction sentences that were all suspended. He served two months, which probably was in between the time that he was arrested and his court hearing was adjudicated, and that was two months period of time. This man was then let loose to come back out into the society and continue to victimize people in the community for well over two years. The victimization has been not brought on just by this individual of ill repute, but has been supported by the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and the judicial system. Therefore, I believe that these individuals need to have Brady letters written on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laberty. All right, anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' comment? Seeing and hearing none, we will close citizen comment and turn to the consent agenda, remembering that we have removed item D. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Consent agenda is now approved, and we'll move on to special presentations, the first being Blue Ridge Rising. Mr. Kevin Brant.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors. My name is Kevin Brant, Virginia Development Director for the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation. I'm pleased to be here this afternoon. The Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation is the sole philanthropic partner to the Blue Ridge Parkway. We've been around for about 28 years, have donated more than $25 million to the Blue Ridge Parkway for projects like trail improvements, restoration of buildings, wildlife cameras, and musical concerts up and down the parkway. We not only fund projects, but we also operate programs, such as the musical programs at the Blue Ridge Music Center near Galax, Virginia, every Saturday night from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and free music concerts every day from April to November. And in 2018, the town of Sparta, North Carolina, came to the foundation and asked if they could help us raise money to restore, reopen, and operate the Bluffs Restaurant at milepost 242, which we now do, and we specialize in southern foodways and special cultural events at that site. We also operate a Kids &amp; Parks Self Guided Trails program that has served more than 1 million kids in 18 states across our country. The trails are designed to foster a love of nature and appreciation of being outside and create a threshold experience for kids that allows them to earn prizes. I can provide more about these projects and programs at a later date, but I'm here this afternoon to speak about the Blue Ridge Rising Action Plan. And I don't know, did you all find copies of this? If not, I have some with me today, and I'll leave those with you. But not everyone realizes that the Blue Ridge Parkway is the most visited national park unit out of all 333 across this country, with more than 16.7 million visitors coming to the Parkway last year. It also generates $1.7 billion in economic benefit to the small gateway communities up and down the Parkway. For every federal dollar invested in the Blue Ridge Parkway, more than $100 comes back to the communities along the Parkway. In spite of this success, we keep hearing that there are opportunities to further improve the economic well-being and resilience of these gateway communities. So Blue Ridge Rising is an initiative we kicked off in 2023 to engage community leaders in the 29 counties that touch the Parkway. This is the first time in the park's 90-year history that someone has looked at the entire corridor and not just the individual unit of the National Park Service. Meetings were held in each county, including here in Amherst at Sweetbrier College. In addition, we held regional meetings and offered an online survey to connect with a wide variety of participants. We concluded that planning effort with a two-state summit in December of 2023 in Blowing Rock, North Carolina. In all, more than 800 people participated across those 29 counties. There was a remarkable agreement on what could be most helpful to improve the region's economy, make the gateway communities more resilient, and provide an even better experience for the millions of visitors who come to the Parkway and this area each year. The Blue Ridge Rising Action Plan includes six themes and more than 50 specific strategies, things like expanding marketing, unifying our region's voice, increasing voluntary protection of scenic views and natural resources, building organizational and community capacity, and enhancing the visitor experience through increased Parkway maintenance of trails, visitor centers, signage, campgrounds, and overlooks. To implement these strategies, we are in the final stages of having our grant submission to the Appalachian Regional Commission reviewed. 24 of the 29 counties are included in the footprint of the Appalachian Regional Commission. We continue to fundraise for both the match for that grant and the funds to implement these strategies in counties like Amherst, which is not a part of the A R C footprint. All told, we're expecting this to be about a $12 million effort with an average of about $400,000 spent or applied to each of the 29 counties. In addition to seeking funds from foundations and individuals, we have requested funds from both the Commonwealth of Virginia and the state of North Carolina. We are not asking any of the 29 counties for any funds at all. We have, however, asked for an individual from each county to serve on the Blue Ridge Rising Ambassador's Action Team. Here in Amherst County, Randy Nixon, who was here earlier, has agreed to serve on that committee. The committee members will voice the unique needs of Amherst County, in this case, help prioritize and guide projects, and foster community partners, and identify appropriate fund sources to continue this effort. This afternoon, I'm asking the board to consider passing a resolution in support of the full recovery of the Parkway from Hurricane Helene, as well as the implementation of the Blue Ridge Rising Action Plan. Doesn't commit you to any funds, but through the implementation of the six themes and these 50 strategies, I think there will be a measurable improvement in economic activity and quality of life for all the residents who live here in the region. And so with that brief presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you, Mr. Brant. Board members, any questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, please. Mr. Brant, thank you for your presentation first, and I was excited to see this in here, obviously, because a lot of the Parkway is in my district and as well as some of Ms. Tucker's district as well, and it's always kind of been near and dear to me since I've, you know, grown up and Parkway being a part of my life throughout. But at the same time, obviously, and I'm not sure how much you can elaborate on this, but over the years, we've seen kind of a degradation of the Parkway for numerous reasons, right? And that's concerning and it's sad at the same time, and of course, Helene did wreak havoc in certain parts of that. So I'm excited to hear that there's hopefully a plan in place to resurrect those parts that were affected so badly. My question specifically is regarding the Otter Creek facility. That, again, a lot of memories in there. My wife and I actually drove up there the other week, and I took her to that and thinking about childhood memories of going in and eating at the Otter Creek Restaurant and things of that nature. I noticed several years ago, I think on a federal website, that they'd put her to request for interest or need, or I don't think it made it to an RFP.
Not yet.
Okay. So just for informational purposes, is there, is that, is the Otter Creek location still on the radar for some sort of resurrection as well?
Although I can't speak for the National Park Service because we're a completely different organization.
Sure.
I have been in meetings where I do understand that they put out the request for expression of interest, RFEI, and their intention is to put out an RFP, request for proposal. I don't know what the timeline is for that, but the last time I was briefed on that topic, that's what we were told. And I would agree, and it's very similar to the Bluffs Restaurant. It was a small restaurant. People have tremendously strong memories of going there with their parents, their grandparents as little kids, taking their kids to it. And when I was first hired by the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation, my first assignment was to lead the restoration of that facility. And I didn't fully appreciate what it meant to the local community. But when it was completed and we had done the restoration, people came in and they had tears in their eyes because they thought about their families who would come up there and have Sunday breakfast or whatever the occasion was, and it's like, oh, my goodness, this is, this is a really special place. And as I've talked to people here in kind of the broader community that would connect with Otter Creek, I really feel kind of the same, same relationship to that place, and it's a beautiful location.
It absolutely is. Is there anything from a locality standpoint, I'm not sure, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Brant, with your background and what your attachment is, is there anything we can do from a locality to help promote that with the Parks Service?
So just very briefly, because I know you have a very full agenda, but the way it worked at the Bluffs Restaurant, and I mentioned this in my comments because when I was talking to Jeremy, he mentioned his relationship and memories to Otter Creek, is that it was the local community that realized when that place, when the Bluffs Restaurant shut down in 2010, that not as many people were coming into the local community, and they scratched their head and finally realized it's because there were no waiters up at the Bluffs Restaurant saying, hey, you know, when a visitor would ask, well, what is there to do around here? And the waitstaff would say, well, you ought to go down to Sparta and check it out. They've got a neat little town, there's, you know, arts and crafts, there's good restaurants, you ought to check it out. And people did. And when that closed, there was nobody up there to direct them down to Sparta. And I suspect that a lot of that happened, you know, at Otter Creek as well, in addition to the very personal memories that people had. And so when local folks in Sparta came to the foundation and said, we'll help you raise the money, you know, the foundation said, oh, okay, and we were successful in doing that. And so if anybody wants to follow up with me after this, I'm certainly happy to continue that conversation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I really do appreciate your presentation. That was, that was very good. All right, so board members, we've got a recommended motion. As you heard, there's no money involved here. It's just that we like what they've got to say, and we want to encourage them to move forward.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I grew up camping on Blue Ridge Parkway, especially Otter Creek. The restaurant and gift shop that Mr. Adams is talking about is a very fond memory to me. I think I smelt every little cedar chest in the place. So if you've got one in your house, I probably smelt it. But yeah, whatever we can do to support you, I think this resolution is just a small part. So, Madam Chair, I'd move that the board adopt Resolution 2025-2-R as presented.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion passes. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, next, we've got landfill financing. Mr. Bryant?
Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, this has been a long time coming for us teeing up this project. This is the financing for landfill cell two. As you know, we're working on, well, we have about until February of 2026 until landfill cell one fills up with trash, so we're working, we concurrently put bids out. We're working with Davenport for financing, so RT Taylor, RT, you're the one coming up? Yeah. RT Taylor of Davenport is going to be here to give a presentation. I will say, before we get started, we're not asking you to make a decision today. He's going to come back at the next meeting for a decision, so he's presenting you this information today. Okay?
Thank you.
So do you want me to start with the comprehensive financial review and then dovetail the, is that fair? Okay. Oh, okay, so I drive it from, yeah, that's fine. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right. I will try to go from this instead of my notebook here. Thank you for having us here today. Again, I'm RT Taylor. I work with Davenport, my colleague Roland Kooch. He and I work together as a team, and we have been doing that for Amherst for a better part of a decade, if not longer. So we're excited to be here today. The first thing we're going to step through is an executive summary of that big comprehensive financial review. You all may recall, over the past couple few years, we've done a few financings for the schools, and as part of that, call it annual addressing, annually addressing the CIP, y'all asked us to then, can we develop something a little more multi-year, which is what we've been sort of evolving to over the years. That's where we wanted to get to, and we're excited to be able to do this and present it to you today. And I think what you'll find in here, it's the big, heavy book that I'm going to start with, but we do have it boiled down to an executive summary, and if you do have any questions, all of the details are in the back, so we can step through that, and hopefully we'll clarify a few things today for everybody here. As part of this discussion, we did get bank bids back, and we want to speak to the, those results and the potential upcoming financing for the landfill, fill you in a little bit of that. And I will just, I mean, one thing that I think we want to accomplish here, and Jeremy can correct me if I'm wrong, is that, yes, we're not asking for formal action on a resolution or any form of financing documents today. That will come March 18th. What we would like to do, maybe by way of motion to get it in the minutes, is for you all to agree upon an approach and select the proposer, just again, get a survey and get it into the minute, so we know how to proceed with legal counsels, Mark, and your bond attorneys at Kaufman, so we can be efficient with how we proceed and get things in place for you by the 18th. And in fact, we got to get it in place for your agenda deadline, which I believe is March 11th. Okay? So that's the only tweak to that. If I may, go ahead and get started on the presentation, if nobody has any questions about what the framework I've just laid out. Okay. So we're going to go through and talk about how we compare ourselves, not just looking at Amherst in a vacuum, but also introduce a group of peer comparisons for you all. And that's how we tend to look at different local government entities, is figuring out, okay, how do y'all look compared to others that are either similar in population size or similar in budget size, as well as other, pull in the discussion about other rated entities that have bond ratings with Moody's, S&amp;P, et cetera. Because when we're ultimately trying to manage our fiscal health, it's always good to have what are known as best practices in mind, have a corner to plumb from with respect to figuring out, okay, well, what are the right levels for us? But every locality has its own nuances, and how we drill down from those peer comparatives to figure out, okay, what is the right level for each of these key financial ratios that Amherst might want to set as a target, or maybe you've got some targets set, how are we tracking against those targets, et cetera? And then next, we're going to give you a overview of the general fund operations and fund balance, your tax-supported debt profile, are you over/under leveraged? We'll give you a sense of that. We'll also talk about, as you're developing your multi-year CIP, what does your debt capacity look like? And when I say debt capacity, how much debt could you bring on and still be looked at from the credit markets perspective as still a strong, financially healthy county versus affordability, your debt affordability? What kind of debt can you bring on and not have to raise new resources? And that's sort of where folks like to begin with dropping in, where are we going to drop these projects in that we know we've got to do at some point? And then next, we'll go through the landfill financing, give you a little bit of perspective on the operations of it, current balances, show you a scenario or two, how we're going to fund it, and then we'll get down to the remainder of what is currently identified or your, call it five-year CIP needs, and then we can wrap it up with some observations and questions. And the books you have, just so you know, everything is tabbed in case you need to quick reference it later, or you, hey, RT said this, I want to be able to flip through, I can find it real quickly, and follow up. Any questions you have after this conversation, feel free to funnel those through Stacy and Jeremy. We're happy to come back and revisit the discussion, clean anything up that you want to further assess. So moving into the executive summary, which is behind tab one, over the past five years, many of your operating expenditures are on an upward trajectory. There's a lot of 8% annual growth on a linear basis. There's some that hit as high as 13. We'll call out those specific areas in a minute. But your operating expenditures are continuing to accelerate or grow faster than what your revenues are, and we'll get to that a little bit in a minute. The, I think the question always happens, you know, when talking about Virginia entities, especially counties, the county is on the hook to fund the school system, right? And so y'all have done a great job of providing monies up and above what the state calculates as your required local minimum. Okay? So y'all have continued to provide the schools, call it operating funds over and above that, but also I think the sub-bullet here is that you also support the debt service, and about 80% roughly of your debt outstanding is tied to schools. So I think the county has done a great job of being there for the schools, providing for the schools historically. Then we want to talk a little bit about your unassigned fund balance on the general fund side. That is your most flexible pot of money. It's what some folks call your rainy day monies. You all are above your policy of 15%. We've got some thoughts on that as part of follow-up to this and continuing to work on things. One of the things we are doing with staff is reviewing the current financial policy guidelines and maybe making some recommendations for enhancement that eventually will come back to you. We'll say, what are your thoughts? But there might be some room for enhancements on your financial policy guidelines. For example, right now, your policy is 15%. It's only measured against your general fund revenue, so that's a smaller denominator than, keep in mind, you also support the schools. So we've got some recommendations to come back with you for, on enhancing how we get to that calculation. But the 15% generally speaking is below GFOA's best practices of 17%. Basically, they want you to have two Basically, they want you to have two months of cash on hand, 15% is below that. So again, we want to work through that, figure out what the right level is for the county, come back to report to you, that what's maybe even an aspirational target versus a first initial, oh, excuse me, first initial bogey that we want to get to. That's, that pretty much wraps up the general summary of that page. What I want to do is go to the next page. There's a couple other thoughts here. Y'all are currently going through, or will be going through, the reassessment. And that reassessment cycle y'all have historically done has been on a six-year basis, based on very conservative, I think, Jeremy, I'm not overdoing that, right? It's pretty conservative estimates. Your reassessment, on average, not every property is the same, so keep that in mind, but on average, your reassessment is looking like, for this coming year, January 1 of '26, it may increase, assessed values may increase for real property by 20%, okay? So one thought is, if it's going to increase by a good clip, there's a couple thoughts here. Number one, your current real estate tax rate is 61 pennies. If you crunch the math, based on that 20% average impact, your equalization rate would be 51 pennies. And I'll, I'll sort of, the spoiler alert here is, you're at 61 pennies now, all your peers, call it, are at 63 pennies. The median of that peer group is at 63 pennies. If you reset to 51, you're going to be well below your peers. That's number one. So there might be some strategic thought in how we set our tax rate at that appropriate time, okay? Additionally, by state code, typically, counties are held to a four-year cycle. Now, if you're below a population of 50,000, you don't have to necessarily adhere to that. But the thought might be that we want to change our frequency on when, so that we capture the growth for county revenue side in between cycles, and don't get sticker shock on the citizen side when we do have a revow. So that might be one other thing. I think it's been a couple decades, I think, since y'all implemented the every-six-year cycle. So just something to revisit over time, especially when we're looking at our operating expenditure growth, not necessarily capital, what we're spending things on, but actually, the operating expenditure growth, several categories are increasing, and our tax rate has been really flat over the past decade. All right, existing tax-supported debt, again, this has nothing to do with the service authority, no other funds, it's what's on our general fund, but that does count for schools, okay? Our school debt and our county debt. So our annual budget for debt service is between $4.5 to $5 million over the next several years. Are we pushing off our debt unnecessarily? The answer's no. If you look at that ratio of 52%, that's telling you, over the next 10 years, we're going to pay back more than half of our debt. That's a good ratio. The industry standard is 50%. So we're hovering right above the industry standard. We're doing very well in not kicking the can, so to speak, on paying back our debt. And again, just to point out, you're at roughly $45 million of your $54 million is related to the schools, and that's roughly 83% of your debt portfolio. You are definitely under the key debt ratio, what we consider best practices or where your policy is. So you're in great shape from that perspective. And then I'll just flip over, oh, but however, going back to my earlier point, the county's debt affordability is a bit tight over the next several years, I think until fiscal year '31 or thereabouts, because y'all sort of are at that peak. Your current budget has recurring revenue services that cover that, plus a few dollars that we talked about over the '22 and '23 years, where we issued those two pieces of VPSA debt for the schools. Any questions before I keep going?
Board members?
Again, this is the executive summary. I'm happy to keep going through this, and then you can ask questions, and we can dig into further detail if you want to.
I've got one on the
Yes, ma'am.
The reassessment. And here it says that per state code, counties are typically required to reassess every four years. What guidance did we get that made us think that six years was a good idea?
What guidance?
What guidance?
That was a county decision?
Do you remember that?
State law allows counties under 50,000 people to do it every six years.
That's right.
And so that's what we've been doing.
How long have we been doing it that way? Do you remember?
As long as I remember.
Yeah, it's been for a long time.
I think it was the early 2000s or something.
Yes, and I remember from previous time that this has always been a point of discussion when we are examining reassessments as far as the timeframe, whether to continue to stay at the six-year mark or to lessen it to that three-to-four-year mark. And I brought it, I brought it up at least a year ago, and I was looked at like I had five heads.
Well, here's my take on it.
Yes, sir.
Because you have to pay for the assessment, so you're going to put that money out.
That's right.
And you could say, well, your tax rate's X, or your tax rate's this, but it's not how much your tax rate is, it's how much your tax bill is going to be, because you can acquire that money regardless of what the values are set at. So even if you do, it's like sticker shock, if somebody looks at their tax rate, they may say their tax rate looks different, but when they get their bill, they'll notice their bill is more, even though the tax rate is potentially less. So it's kind of like musical chairs or house of cards, it all depends how you want to do it. You still have to extract the money from the taxpayer in order to get the money. So regardless of what the tax rate is, it's more dependent on what, how much you're actually going to get from the tax bill. That's the way I look at it.
Yes, sir. And you're right on, right on point, and there's a couple slides in here in the detailed section that will give some order of magnitude to that. I think the key point is that if we've got operating expenditure growth that's continuing on an upward trajectory, but we're not adjusting our revenues to provide those services to the citizens, because obviously, they want the services, because those expenditures are continuing to grow, it's an adjustment one way or the other, right?
Yeah. Well, except for you don't have to pay for the assessment every four years, you put it all forward, so you don't have to have that expenditure. That's where I would say that it's beneficial to the county to do it every six years, because you're not having to put out the additional monies every three years.
Okay, but we could also debate that on the side of the citizen, which every one of us are in here, right? You take this reassessment period that we're examining right now, and when we did it last was in 2018, is that correct?
19.
2019? So you think about what the housing market was doing in 2019 compared to now, right? So if, I've got friends, and I've talked to some of you about, I take another county that's north of here, they're coming back now with averages of 28% increases, right? So when we're dealing with tough economic times, that's sticker shock for the citizen, which we all are. I think, even though, I get where you're coming from, Mr. Pew, as far as paying for the reassessment fees, but I think we also got to be mindful of the people. That's why we're here. So if we can lessen that sticker shock by decreasing that timeframe to where you don't have such a huge, because I think, I think it would be a safe assessment that if we'd have done this every three years, we wouldn't be looking at a 20% to 28% hike, right?
That's
It would be more of an incremental increase.
But that's on your tax rate, it's not on your actual tax bill.
Well, it all ties in.
Yeah, it's linked together.
Yes, sir.
So if you value your house as more, but your tax rate is lower, I mean, you're still, you know, let's say you don't equalize, that's the whole point of equalization, is to get back to the tax revenue that you had.
Well, I understand, but as we're sitting here listening to his report, and I don't want to tie up much of time, because we have got a lot to do, but we're sitting here debating as far as the revenues and the expenses, that curve is coming together pretty rapidly, more rapidly than I feel comfortable with, right? This also gives us a quicker time to be able to readjust to figure the roadmap for us to go with our projects moving forward. That's the way I see it, right? So.
Mr. Martin, you were trying to say something?
Yeah, so let's just
Keep going.
No, 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 no. Let's just cut to the chase. You mentioned it earlier, and said you'd get to it, but the 8% and 13% increases, where were those at?
If you would like to flip in the book.
Public safety, can I answer? Public safety is one.
And schools is probably the other.
Schools. So, I'm going to have to look at the book. I apologize. I can't even see what page it is. It's 19.
Screen right there. Page 19.
All right, I have it dog-eared, I just want to make sure I flip to the right one. All right, so you've got on page 19, and I know it's a tiny matrix, but I think it's more visible in your booklets. If you look down under lines 17 through 29, those are all the expenditures on the general fund. The ones, if you look to the far right, where if you do the linear math, the average annual growth, you'll see that general governmental 8.6% increase, judicial administration 8.7, public safety is 7%. You've got public works at 13.2, and these are the, these are the big dollar ones, too. I'm not just calling out percentages on small dollars. These are the ones I'm highlighting are related to bigger dollars. And then you've got on health and welfare. Now, I believe, and Stacy can correct me if I'm wrong, but on health and welfare, that's part and part, you know, unfunded mandates. You get, you get 2/3 from, what is it, child and communities?
Well, the DSS and Child Services Act
Correct.
Both get about 2/3 from this.
So, but that increase, you're still covering a third of it, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
You're still, you're having to fund these additional
Absolutely.
Requirements. Yeah, you're getting some dollars for it, but you're still, your local costs are still going up. And that's, that's just the point we're trying to make, is that revenues aren't necessarily tracking to cover these increases. There's little in the way to cut. I think y'all, both county board and staff, have done a great job of managing, under the same rate, call it, in revenues over the past at least five years that we're looking at here today. So y'all have done more with less over this past several years, but it's maybe time for considering how we might pull some levers to catch up, or maybe do it in a, not in just one budget year, but maybe think about how we can gradually get through that to get a better cushion. Because I think the other thing, too, as I pointed out earlier, y'all have done a good job, too, of squirreling, you've been able to generate surpluses all these years, but still, again, that's what I'm saying, you've tightened up expenditures as best you can to maintain some cushion for surplus for operations, and at the same time, you've grown your fund balance a little bit. But we're saying that that fund balance level that you're currently at may, you might want to think about enhancing that. That's what I was getting at earlier, because you do have several things to address in the coming years for the benefit of the citizenry.
I think that's what scares me the most, is what we're looking in a gun barrel of in the future. That's going to be inevitable, right? It's not going to be a want, it's going to be a need, from whether it's school systems, public safety, infrastructure, and these are not frills and thrills. I mean, this is going to be bare bones necessities as we look for the growth in the county. And that, that's truly what's scaring the hell out of me.
Yes, sir. And I think that's why, I think it was about 18 months ago when we were talking, and we said, you know, we'd like to do more of a multi-year look, and I think y'all were intuitively sort of in sync with where we were headed on that, and that's why y'all gave us the direction to come back at some point and do this, so.
Well, just, if I'm a humor man, then we can move on.
Yes.
So general governments went up 8.6.
6.
Is that the raises we gave employees? I know there was a few more employees, but is that what accounts for the majority of that?
So if you look at page 17, Mr. Martin, just a couple pages back, we tried to give a little perspective on those increases and which line they were tied to, but also a little bit of flavor on exactly what was going on behind this.
Salary benefit increases.
Yes, sir.
Public safety, 7% salary and benefit in addition of a new division, so I'm guessing that's the fourth medic unit, all right?
So when were these numbers, because that was a question I had, Mr. Martin, when, because I actually misspoke a moment ago, when we were looking at the percentages increases, we always throw Mr. Beam under the bus with, you know, with his demands, and they're needed, but he's actually under some of the other. When were these numbers evaluated? As far as the numbers that are in here, they are as of when?
Oh, if you look at page 19, the fiscal years are at the top of the column in the green, green section.
Okay, I apologize.
So from 19 through 2024 fiscal year.
So, with that being said, Mr. Martin, that does not factor in Mr. Beam's fourth medic unit staffing and the additional 13 personnel that we added last year. So these numbers are still going to be, no disrespect, but they're somewhat skewed because we're not, it's not factoring in the fiscal year we're operating in now. Correct.
That's correct. We don't have 25
Yeah, and I get that. Yeah, no, I completely understand.
We don't have the audits available.
Right, yeah, yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Thank you.
Do we want to go back there, or back to the executive summary?
Where you want.
Finish that up. Thank you, Mr. Martin, keep me straight. All right, so again, I want to highlight this, because this is an important key concept, looking at your debt profile, trying to figure out what capacity do we have, what projects do we have ahead of us, and trying to figure out where some of those are going to slot in from a priority perspective, what's got to be done first, second, third, what fiscal year can we start knocking some of this stuff out? So talking strictly from a debt capacity perspective, how much can we take on as debt to fund some of this from our, from the purposes or perspective of our tax base, call it your assessed value, right? Versus what's our current budget that we're sliding over here to cover debt service and capital programming? So if you look at it just from the capacity perspective, financially, you're in good shape, right? You can, you could take on 90 to 100 million dollars of debt. We're not recommending it, that's not a recommendation, it's an observation. If you look at just what's affordable with, under your current debt service budgeted resources, et cetera, recurring basis, you could take on about 17 million dollars, okay? And it's a couple years out, because we're still in that bottleneck period until about 2030, 2031. But there are some things that we could do to get around that, but looking at it just from a plain, call it mortgage-style approach, trying to be conservative, we didn't want to overdo it here, that 90 to 100 million dollars gets whittled down pretty quickly based on resources, okay?
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
So obviously, we're not taking on 90 to 100 million dollars worth of debt.
That's, I want to make that clear, that's not a recommendation.
We're talking about 5.2 million.
That's right, yes, sir. Right, 5.6. And it's to, as you, you adopted a reimbursement resolution
I'm using Johnny Mark numbers right there. 5.2, 5.6 is what you're saying. Okay.
Not to exceed 5, let me put it that way, not to exceed 5.6. Yes, sir.
So the 17 million in new debt obligations, is that up until 2031, or is that starting 2031?
Like I said, we, when we get to the landfill financing part, I can talk through a little bit of what we're proposing, the way of structuring to get around the bottleneck. But if you look at the chart, I can show you here in a little bit, I'll show you where that 17 million pops into play.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Sure.
Okay, I'll circle back to it. If I forget, you can come knock me in the head.
I will.
All right.
Well, I won't knock you in the head, but I will.
All right, so from the landfill, again, this is the executive summary, trying to give you a page or two on each sort of, call it, big picture section. The landfill operations are mostly supported by the general fund. Again, that general fund is taking care of a lot of stuff, schools, landfill, et cetera. On an annual basis, your operating expenditures on the landfill are roughly $2 million, okay? The county is preparing to issue, as you put it, 5.2 million dollars here shortly for cell number two. That estimated debt service could be roughly in the $500,000 range, okay? So what we're saying is, we've got to find some resources to pay for. Now, I know Brian, is Brian here today? Hey, Brian. Brian and Stacy and Jeremy, we all discussed that y'all have made some recent revisions to the pay schedules and et cetera, tipping fees, everything for the landfill. So the rubber hadn't hit the road on where that, what the order of magnitude is to be able to cover what it can cover, right? So more, more to come on that. We do know that the landfill closure, post-closure fund has been underfunded. I think it's sort of the brakes were put on hold for a couple few years on what we were squirreling away into the, that fund in particular. So that's one thing to keep in mind as well. And then we did some, with Brian's help, we got some peer comparative information on rates, et cetera, call it, in the surrounding, call it our competition landfills, what their rates are compared to ours, and I think what you'll see And I think what you'll see here real quickly is if we're at fifty-five fifty and the median's at fifty-five dollars, we're spot on with being competitive, if that makes sense. So there might be some, some, still some tweaks to assess and evaluate with respect to how we charge at the landfill to maybe relieve some pressure on the general fund. That's what those two bottom bullets are referring to, basically. All right, as it relates to the financing of cell two, we took a dual approach. We want to make sure we got the best value for your financing. You're going to be paying on this for fifteen years, the life of the cell, basically. We want to make sure we get you the right terms, conditions, interest rate, et cetera. So we actually applied to the state bond pool program, Virginia Resources Authority. We also sent out a bank RFP to over a hundred banks, got back five or six banks bid on it. And we're going to show you those results in that skinny book in just a little bit when we get to the landfill discussion a little bit more in depth, okay?
So a question real quick.
Yes, sir.
And I mean, I don't, I'm not trying to jump ahead, but just to make sure we touch base. So what you were talking about as far as the banks versus bonds, right? I saw on here, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not rated right now.
That's correct, yes, sir.
All right, so how does that affect? Because I I didn't know we weren't rated right now. I I remember back in history, we were, we were A-rated. I don't know if we were double A-rated or what it was, but it was some time ago.
It must have been a long, long time ago.
Really? Okay. So, and again, I'm not trying to steal.
You're fine, keep going.
So what, what do we, what are the parameters for, and does it benefit us to be rated?
So there's a couple of schools of thought, and the one that sticks out to me that we just sort of got through that process, call it, and I, there's nothing here that I'm giving you that isn't public for public consumption. So a couple of years ago, when we were doing some planning for the city of Lexington, Virginia, right? We we did a big comprehensive financial review like this, then we segmented and did a strategic plan of finance on the, on the general fund side or governmental side. About twelve months later, we did the one for the utility. It was all in, in leading up to getting rated because they, their debt that was rated matured in oh-eight or with, and so the rating agencies withdrew the ratings because they didn't have any more public debt to rate. And so we actually got their direction, the city council's direction, to go forward and get rated for several reasons. One, it it increases your universe of potential investors, which drives financing costs down. Having a rating, one of the first things businesses that want to locate in a locality, one of the first things they look at is, well, we need to learn about this locality. Where do they go? Well, they're, you know, big money people. They're trying to figure out where would it make sense? Where could we draw employees from? You know, is it going to be a community that they value schools? And obviously, y'all do, that's one of y'all's big, big attractors. They look for that bond rating and see how well it's run, right? How fiscally well the, that locality is run. So that would be sort of, call it another add-on to why you might want to get one. We've had discussions over the years, and I'm sorry I keep hitting that, but we've had those discussions over the years. But historically, y'all have been able to access public monies at good rates through both the Virginia Public School Authority and the Virginia Resources Authority. And I'll take it a step further. On your school stuff, right? If you wanted to go out and issue debt for your schools on your own, okay? Like, like we did a year ago, we needed fourteen million dollars. If you were going to go do that on your own, whether it be through a bank or on your own bonds, you would have to issue that as lease revenue bonds, okay? Or the alternative is go through a referendum process, get it voted as GO debt, right? So you can go either way. You're just going to have to tie up collateral, and it's going to be appropriation back. So the interest on it, call it, is going to be a little bit higher than the GO bonds. So you haven't had really the need through VPSA, and you haven't had to tie up collateral through VPSA. You're allowed to go issue GO debt because it's a state pool program. And that way, you get a straight-up GO without pledging collateral or going through a referendum. So there's different benefits to both sides. That's why it hasn't been a big push. But if it's something that we want to be the masters of our own destiny at some point and have a credit rating, and it also provides reporting, other than from Davenport, it's another third party or fourth party, if you will, with Moody's, S and P, or Fitch rating the county, and you have a good, good report card to show citizens or companies interested in locating here, that we're, we're fiscally responsible, we, we're doing a good job. So.
Chris, Mr. Adams, I'm like you. I remember hearing that we had an A-rating.
I know that's not a figment of my imagination. I mean, I'm, I know I'm getting old and becoming crazy, but I.
Do we have an answer?
It's a long timer. Well, he's older than me.
I've been here fifteen years, maybe, yeah, I guess something like that, so I do remember it. Are any of our neighbors rated?
Help me roll in. Out. Abmarl, yes, they're highly rated.
There was a list in your, I I think I read the list of the ones that were rated in your portfolio last night. So I think it's in there, Ms. Tucker, but.
Yeah, and we can break it out even further.
But it wasn't many that surrounded us that I remember.
No, and I'll say, you know, there's like thirty-eight, thirty-nine independent cities across the Commonwealth of Virginia, and I think it's something like eighty percent of them are rated, whether they're frequent issuers or not, they do it. And then I think, what is it, about a third or more of the counties in the Commonwealth are rated. And everybody just has a different philosophy, a different perspective on whether we need a rating or not, or whether we want a rating or not. And there's costs associated with it. I'd say on average, you know, if you wanted to just go get a rating, even if you didn't have a bond issuance to do, I mean, it's got some costs, just like your reassessment. So it's got some costs associated, but it's like, you know, in the grand scheme of things, it's very de minimis compared to maybe the potential benefits, too. And like when you're going through with a bond pool program like VRA or VPSA, you're on their, their schedule. They only issue bonds maybe twice a year. VRA sometimes does a summer pool. They've been pretty consistent lately, but what was it, two summers ago, they didn't do it? So we had to slide some folks who wanted to participate in that to the fall. It's, you know, it, I can make pros and cons all day long up here. I'm not, and I don't have a dog in the fight. If if it's something y'all want us to discuss more, we're happy to put together more information for you and come back and discuss that at a separate meeting.
Would it change how we operate at all? Would it change how our finance director does her job if we're rated or not rated?
If I have to give information, I'll need more staff.
Well, to some extent, but we, as your financial advisor, we do a lot of the heavy lifting. And I think you could talk to Jen Bell at Lexington, who didn't have a, a concept of how much we were going to bug her or not. And she was very, very thrilled of the heavy lifting we did for them to get them. They got, they're at double A two, double A, so they're right in the middle of that. You know, you got triple A, and then you got double A, and they're right in the middle of the double A. So I.
Clearly, we're not going to fix this today, but I I don't know about the rest of the point. I would, I would really like for us to have more discussion about this in the future. So after we get to this budget process.
Okay. All right. So let me, I tell you what, since we're sort of gotten in the weeds a little bit, why don't we stop right here on the landfill financing part? Let's do it right here. The skinny book I handed out looks like this. You said it's the second tab over. Thank you. I don't know why I keep grabbing my book like I'm going to use it. I got a drive up here. All right, if everybody's got that in front of them, I just want to make sure before I jump into it and speed off. So y'all are contemplating issuing this landfill financing for the cell two project. It's also going to cover some engineering costs and some cost of issuance, et cetera. And so speaking to that dual, dual-tracking approach, we did go out to the banks on January thirty-one. We got the proposals back February twenty-first. We did submit the VRA application in late January. Their due date was early February, so we got ahead of it because of, with your meetings, we wanted to make sure they were looking at our stuff sooner rather than later so we could get notification and still meet their deadlines, direction from y'all basically. What we, what we have determined with staff's input, with council's input, is that the timing of the VRA spring pool, they would not price their bonds and thereby fix your interest rates until early March, like May sixth, I think is the tentative sale date. So we'd be hanging out there for another seventy days before they set their rate. And then extend it by another two or three weeks, you wouldn't have your money for the project until late May. So what I think we've all determined, and Jeremy can correct me if I'm wrong, but what we have done is simply removed VRA from the table as an option because it's just not going to give us the money when we need it, and there's still a lot of volatility in the market. The rates could move up and down along the way, and we just don't want to, you know, we want to take some of that risk off the table, okay? And I'll give you the price of what that insurance buys us a little bit, is what I'm going to get to. So we've got bids in hand, call it a bird in the hand, with the banks. We got really good rates, especially from Truist, at three point nine nine percent for a fifteen-year financing. And they, both that bank, Truist, and the cover bank, Webster, they both provided the ability, the flexibility, that if we wanted to, over the next fifteen years at some point, prepay it, we can do so. Now, both banks have different provisions for that, and we can go through the details if you want to, but the upshot is having that flexibility built in, call it empirical data, would tell us that that's a helpful feature. If we went through VRA, I know it's off the table, but I'm just going to draw a quick comparison, we wouldn't be able to prepay the VRA debt for the first ten years because by virtue of issuing bonds in the public markets, there's a typical no-call period for the first ten years. Investors want to lock in their yield for a minimum of the first ten years. So the rest of this analysis is really going to focus on the Truist and Webster proposals. And I I'll just skip to the scenario one, it's plain vanilla mortgage style, and we're only illustrating this for the first five years, just to show you the difference between the annual obligations between the two scenarios. The total debt service on line thirteen is the total for the fifteen years. I just want to be clear on that. We're not shortchanging anything here. It's just for illustration purposes. And why that is, is because in the first, I keep walking away from the microphone, I apologize, for the first couple of years, we're going to capitalize interest for the first eighteen months. Mr. Martin, to your question earlier, that's the little bit of structuring we're doing to get us over the hump with some of that bottleneck. We don't want to overstructure it and really make this cost a lot more because with pushing principal or capitalizing too much interest, that makes it more expensive. Okay? The only difference on this is that when you borrow for capitalized interest, you're, you're getting that money, so you're making your interest payments. The only difference is you're paying interest on the higher amount, if that makes sense. So the, the amount is de minimis related to the interest expense and capitalizing interest expense. Does that, does that make sense? All right. But that helps us and buys us, buys the impact down a little bit, if you will, for just a few extra dollars. Is that, are you with me?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something. So if you look at the two, obviously, scenario one is less expensive, but between scenario one, Truist, which is column B, and scenario two, Truist, which is column D, it's somewhere between two fifty, three hundred thousand dollars over a fifteen-year period. And if you PV that back, it's even less than that. I mean, your, your opportunity cost in this case might be the LGIP, where you can earn four and a half percent. So if you PV that back, that, call it two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're going to get somewhere just, just south of a hundred thousand dollars present value cost. So it's fairly de minimis over a fifteen-year period. So in in this particular case, what we care about is this green box at the bottom. So on average, between these two years, if you're just looking at the two differences, on average, this impact is about eight hundred thousand dollars less than scenario one that you'd have to fit into the budget over the next two years. Said another way, if you go with scenario one, you're going to have to find eight hundred thousand dollars from your budget to cover your first couple of years of payments. And I think it's a little tight right now, and we don't know how the reassessment or where we're going to head down with rates or pulling levers in future budgets to make that call today. I think those are decisions y'all are going to be making in the coming months. So I, I think if I could jump to the next page, for key considerations, I think here, because they're so evenly matched, the only difference being Truist has the lowest rate, I think that's pretty clear, pretty intuitive, that that would be the recommended bank. So I'm going to skip to the recommendation slide and and just end with, you know, based on our discussions with staff, with legal councils, we'd recommend moving forward with the fifteen-year bank loan with Truist at the three point nine nine percent. You can do that, their, their rate is not bouncing around between now and closing. They said, we'll hold that rate firm, you can count on it until we close on this loan, as long as we close by the middle of April. So we're good there. Once we close, again, that rate is fixed through final maturity. It's not a variable rate, it's not bouncing around, we're not at risk to whatever happens in the market, it's a known entity. We maintain flexibility to prepay the loan. It it does have a make-whole provision, but that can go work for us or against us over time. If rates come down, right? That make-whole penalty might present itself, but if rates go up and they can redeploy at higher rates and we have another reason to pay it off, there's no penalty, right? Does that make sense?
All right, I think that's what I wanted to touch on, just to make sure my simple mind understands. Because I'm thinking from a business side, a simple interest, you know, we always heard simple interest loans, things of that nature, right?
Yes, sir.
I want to convert it to government. I want to make sure I'm understanding this right. So between scenario one and scenario two, really, the only downside to the bottom line is roughly not just shy of three hundred thousand dollars over a fifteen-year period of time, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. Secondly, is by doing that, that eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars over twenty-six and twenty-seven, that would clear up that cash flow for us.
You got it.
Right? And then finally, if for some reason, the old magic genie shows up with a bunch of money for us.
Yes, sir.
We can pay off this fifteen-year debt early or pay down on it and not be penalized for that. Is that correct?
You hit it all right.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And I guess the other, the last sub-bullet there is that that would provide us the opportunity to go ahead and close on, on the bank financing earlier rather than later, and we've got our money. If if you all, you know, put us on the right path today with a motion, come back on the eighteenth, and that gets approved, resolution in form of financing documents, I think, Jeremy, that's the point at which y'all could award the notice of construction, I mean, the, award the contract, and then proceed and commence with the construction.
Okay, so again, I need to divert back to Mr. Marx's comments during the citizens' comments section. If we're going to borrow the five point some million dollars, and I understand correctly that the RFP, or the proposal we got back, that you guys are leaning toward is three point whatever, right? That gap, and maybe I missed this in our discussions, are we going to use those funds in the gap to help with the, the closure?
No, we're not going to overborrow and use proceeds.
Okay, so we're going to borrow what we need.
Just that, that five point two, five point six, those are higher conservative estimates we use to run your comprehensive review for conservatism, the, the results of the bank RFP. If the, if the, between the three point eight and the half million dollars on the engineering, if we end up somewhere in the neighborhood of four point five to four point eight, we're going to borrow four point five or four point eight. We're not going to still borrow five point six.
Okay.
And be sitting on those dollars for any particular reason.
So now, how are we going to handle, handle the underfunded closure?
Right.
That's the million-dollar question.
Yeah, would you give us some time to meet with staff to come back and give your recommendation on, on that?
Well, I think all that is really relevant to the discussions we're having today with revenue projections and budget projections, and don't you think?
I do.
Do we not have an answer?
We, we have three point eight million dollars. Is it three point eight or three point nine? Three point eight. Close to three point nine for post-closure, and RT, you said we need up to about five point two for post-closure.
For the closure and post-closure fund, I feel like we might have that.
You said five point two in your presentation.
And we have three point nine.
Three point nine.
All right, that's a problem.
Well, it's. Well, it's, it's for when you go to close, so you've got time to address that problem? Does that make sense?
Well, I understand.
Because you build cell two doesn't mean, and Brian stepped in and corrected me if I'm wrong, but by virtue of creating cell two, you're still going to have some capacity, even, even with air capacity, where that stuff gets leveled off as you're starting to fill in two. So you've got time, how many years, Brian, before we close, actually close cell one? I'm, I'm saying you don't, you don't use that fund and close up cell one first.
No, I, I understand that. We got to, yeah, I, I get that.
Let me get out of your way.
When I hear underfunded, I hear things we got to do, we got to find the gap.
We got to build it up, but I think the point is we got time to do that and figure that where those, where we're going to start squirreling way more dollars into that.
Yes, sir.
over the next couple of fiscal years.
Yeah, yeah, well, how much, how much money do we have to find, come up with? And how long do we have to find it?
Why don't you speak to the life?
May I address Mr. Adams' question first?
Absolutely.
So we have about one year left of active airspace. So active airspace, active using the landfill.
Okay.
Once that's done, we'll put what's known as intermediate cover on there, meaning it's not closed, but it's not open. And what we hope for is over the years, as millions of pounds of pressure push down on the landfill, it creates more gaps and more space. Then we come back as a staff, we uncover it and put more trash in, put more intermediate cover on. And we do that for the subsequent 15 years, and we try to avoid closure as long as possible in accordance with what the engineers and what the DEQ tell us to do.
Okay. So let me make sure, you said we have 15 years to close it?
No, what I said was we have one year of airspace before we put intermediate cover on it. And it's closed and not closed at the same time, but it's not in what's known as post-closure at that point.
Okay. So if, that makes perfect sense. However, I'm sure when you're closing this thing and then opening it back up, that's going to, that's going to have some incurred costs as well, right? Is that something that?
That's something staff can do internally.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
So, Madam Chair, when do we need to spend 5.2 million dollars?
For post-closure costs, when the DEQ tells us.
Which may be 15 years.
It could be 10 years, it could be six years, it could be 15 years.
Okay.
That's good to know, yeah, okay. Thank you.
But I think the upshot again is you got a little bit of time to figure that out. But I think that's why we did this comprehensive review, to identify some challenges and figure out how we're going to address them in the, call it either Budget 26 or some combination of Budget 26 and Budget 27.
But obviously 5-point, I'm sorry, man. Obviously, 5.2 million dollars today is not 5.2 million dollars in 15 years.
Every, time costs money. Yes, sir.
I'm actually shocked with that interest rate, to be honest with you. I, I figured, yeah, I figured it would have been higher than that. In, in the current times.
Yeah.
And I, does, yeah, right.
Highest 4.8.
Yeah. Well, e- even, even now, that's, that's still.
There was, there's another little local government, little town, and they simply needed a pumper truck. And they went to their local bank thinking, we'll just go straight to them. They gave them, it's over six, you know, six, it's like 6.13% for a, a, I feel like it was a, it might have been a 15-year, no, seven-year financing. Seven years, 6.13%. We're recommending potentially adding it to the piece we're currently working on through VRA. Because we can structure, you can't look, I'm sorry, I'm giving you somebody else's example, sorry.
So is there anything else here that you need to tell us, or you?
Well, I, I think what we would like today is a motion and direction. Are we good moving forward with Truist, the bank loan approach at 3.9% for 15 years? If we can get that direction from y'all today, we can coordinate with Mark and your folks at Kaufman to get the documents and resolution prepared for your consideration at your March 18th meeting. So if you could document that and memorialize that in the, in the meeting minutes with a motion, and we can get a vote on that or something, so we have a solidified approach to move forward with. That would be the only request.
We're just making a motion on a scenario, right?
Scenario, are we good with scenario two? That would be the recommendation, is scenario two, and moving forward with the bank approach with Truist. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I, I, I mean, I know I've run my mouth a bunch. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just want to be clear. So under the structured debt service scenario two with Truist, the total debt service would be $7,223,000.
Yes, sir. And it's still, it's still estimated because we.
That's about what we would pay back, $7 million.
If we stick with, if we were to stick with 5.6, but we're going to bring that down.
It could be, could be less.
Yes, sir.
Not going to be more, it could be less, right?
Right.
So that's going to cost us roughly $250,000 more over the life of the loan. But, or yet, 2025, or actually 2026, we don't pay anything.
Correct.
The first payment is $110,723.
That's right.
Takes a little pressure off of us on our debt.
That's effectively half-year's interest. Yeah.
So, I got you.
Yes, sir.
We're really kind of off the hook for, I mean, I'm not, I'm not discounting $110,000, but we're, I mean, for the most part, we're off the hook for two years, two fiscal years, correct?
Effectively, yeah, that's the, that was our goal, yes, sir.
And that also gets us to reassessment, right?
Yes, sir, you, you'll hit, so I think the way this is structured, you'll be in fiscal year '27, so you would have already adopted your '27 budget, and you still wouldn't have your first interest payment out of pocket until the second half of fiscal year '27. After you collect taxes, basically.
All right, and just, just because I'd like to get an answer. Mr. Marx brought up the 2.5 million Gateway Loan.
Yes, sir.
That and all these figures, or no?
It is not, and the reason is, is because it's not your debt. That's the debt of the authority. Y'all, it, there was a discussion had back in the planning of that, and the county board said, we'd really like to get this project done. Because you remember, we had two interim financings to do at the time. One straight up on the authority's infrastructure needs, which that's going to be brought down to based on current revised information. But that was a separate interim financing from the Gateway Project. And the Gateway Project itself, the county was behind for economic development purposes. And you might even recall, we had discussions about setting up a service district, or the county was going to negotiate with the developer to have some kind of agreement in place. And I think y'all went the route of not doing the service district, but going the route of directly coordinating with the developer. My understanding is it ended up slowing down to probably a pretty slow pace. However, the debt, the interim note comes due next year. Y'all committed to paying the interest up until that due date on the interim note. And then when it gets taken out long-term, the methodology or approach behind that has not been determined. But again, the assets are owned by the authority, and the debt would be there on the backs of the authority. So that should be covered, because it's self-supporting, by the revenues that are generated by the authority and maybe even the development at some point. The county has not entered into any kind of MOU, as I understand it, on how that long-term takeout of the interim note is going to be funded, if at all, by the county side. So there's still work to be done on that. But as we would interpret it right now, once that gets taken out long-term, it's debt on the authority itself, not the county. To the extent y'all decide to chip in from there, that's up to y'all, right?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Board members, any other questions, or are you ready for a motion?
I'm sorry, I thought I interrupted you.
No, that's okay. I just want to make sure everybody has their questions answered.
Thank you, sir, yeah.
But, so, Mr. P, do you have anything?
We've covered, covered.
So, Madam Chair, based on that, I, I guess I will note that I don't like spending more money than we need to. However, I, I think as we segue into the budget workshop this afternoon, I, I think we all understand what we're up against this year. I think it's going to be important to be able to free up at $820,000 worth of cash flow over the course of the next two fiscal years. So with that being said, I'm going to make a motion to go with scenario two with Truist for the 15-year, for the 15-year note. Is that all you need?
Yeah, for cell two of the landfill, so.
Yeah, for cell two of the landfill. Anything else we need to include in that language, Mr. Popovich?
No, sir, that's, that's okay.
Okay, that's my motion, Madam Chair.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Adams. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank, yes, ma'am, thank you. And just let us know, we'll, we'll see you back on the 18th. If you go through any more details on the comprehensive review, I'm glad we stuck with the executive summary today. But happy to either have, you know, discussions through staff or however y'all want to do it. Happy to answer any questions, because I know y'all are getting ready to go into really detailed budget discussions. So we're happy to help.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next we have the, what? Parks and Rec, and we have Mr. Sorry.
Randy Nixon in Hill Studios.
From Hill City, Hill City Studios.
Good afternoon, Board. I'm going to take a little time here to just give you a little detail on what's happened with this. We have Catherine Packers here from Hill Studios to give you a presentation on where we started and where we ended with the master plan. And today, we're not going to ask you to approve anything, we're just providing a presentation. And we want to go back, there's actually a couple of sections in the, in the plan where there's a couple of options, one for Coolwell Park and one for the little acreage over here at the house, we call it Melissa's House. But there's two options there that we want to, I'm going to take back to my advisory board, which we meet on Monday to get their opinion on what they would like to see. Have them kind of vote on which one they would, which option they would like to recommend to the board. But this basically today is just to give you a presentation of what, how we got to where we're at. We are going to ask that you review the, the plan. I think that plan is in your agenda attachment, as an attachment along with the presentation. But we'd like for you to look at that between now, and we want to come back on April 1st to get an approval of the final draft with any changes you, you may have. If you could get those thoughts to, to us, to staff, to Jeremy or myself. Do we want to just send it to us, Jeremy, and then we send it on to Hill Studios? Is that what we want, any changes or anything they would like? Okay, just send it to Jeremy or myself, and we can get it to Hill Studios. Anything that you see in there that might need tweaking, changing, questions, whatever. But I'm going to turn it over to Catherine Packer, who's with Hill Studios, and she's going to kind of give you a, a review of what we did to get, get here today. Thank you.
And thank you for introducing me. Hello, everyone, my name's Catherine Packer. I'm with Hill Studio, and we're here to present our overall master plan. And Hill Studio, yeah, we are based in Roanoke, Virginia. We do community planning, landscape architecture, architecture, historic preservation. And here is an overview of the team who's put in a lot of work over the past year to prepare the master plan. So what we wanted to present to you today was our overall master plan. Since we don't have all day to present the entire plan to you, I want to give you a brief overview of our public engagement and how we got to the development of our master plan, and then an overall guide to our master plan. And then, please feel free to give me comments, and then at the end, I can open it for Q and A. So a little overview of our public engagement was starting back in the fall of 2023 and ongoing. We've been taking a couple of forms, pop-up events, online community survey and focus group to reach out to county citizens, as well as some expert stakeholders to get their views on what existing conditions are to the public perception, what amenities people would like to see, and overall, what's feasible to do, as well as what to prioritize, prioritize. So overview, pop-up events, here's an example of some things that we did. We went to three events back in the fall of 2023 to interact personally. We got to interact with a little over 500 people at these events. And what we did was, we put up a pop-up tent, put up some interactive posters where people could vote on things like, what parks do you like to visit? What's your favorite park? And what would you like to see more of, so that we could get a view from regular people on what they would like to see? And also just having a lot of casual conversations with people, too. So an overview of the community survey we did, we used a tool called MapChurnair. It's an, MapChurnair is an interactive map-based, map-based survey tool. So we had people go online, take our survey, and talk about things like existing parks, existing community centers. What parks do people currently visit? What do they think of each one? Perceive conditions of facilities and what amenities and programs would people like to see? And then, since we have some properties come into the county recently, what amenities would people like to see? And here's an example of the little cards we gave out at various events, leading people to our survey. And one thing we enjoyed seeing about, from MapChurnair was how we were able to get heat maps from where people could point on a map of where they would like to see amenities. And here's an example of Coolwell Park. And back a while ago, we met with about 20 different people from various stakeholder groups to share their insight into the county, so we could better get a better understanding of what was going on and what opportunities we could further develop for each amenity. And an overview from our online survey, we had about 156, yeah, we had 166 completed responses. And this was on a scale of one to five from overall perception of county citizens. It's about a neutral perception, so means that we're off to a good start, but there's definitely room for us to improve. It also let us see what are visitors doing, walking and running, spending time with people, playing on the playground. Also, why are people visiting? What do they want to get out of their park experience? And also, what kinds of things do they like to do? What do they want to see in the park? So then we went over to our site, to develop a site analysis for each park. We visited a lot of parks in person, took a lot of pictures, took a lot, some aerials. Luckily, we were able to get some drone footage, so we could really see what was going on in the park, both from the bird's eye view for a good planning perspective, but also to see what it's like in real life. And then we were also able to integrate feedback from the survey, pop-up events, focus groups, as well as seeing existing plans, as well as our site visits, in order to compile all of our information. And we were also able to use our mapping data, too, to see, okay, where are people making comments in the parks to see, are these the best places then to develop new amenities? And then here's our heat map overall. So some key takeaways is every park is unique. So we really wanted to create a unique identity for each park and make each park its own individual destination, so that each park is special. We really want to improve the facilities as the county grows, and we have to meet future needs. How do we improve existing facilities so that we can meet that demand in the future? Also, improve accessibility. We want to make sure that all county residents have access to these parks and programs, so that it can be enjoyed by everyone. We want to increase our recreation opportunities, expand our offerings, not only at existing parks, but as much as possible. Also, focus our new amenities, newly acquired properties, and see which property is the best location for each amenity that people want. And also, there's a lot of educational and cultural opportunities, big history, a lot of cultural amenities that, there's a lot of opportunities for historic and environmental interpretive signage, environmental education opportunities, a lot of opportunities for interactive play, sensory play, a lot of opportunities for public art. So we're trying to find where we can highlight these cultural resources. And then our next step was creating a site analysis overall through our concept development plan. So first, analyzing the site, existing conditions. And then also going back and integrating the feedback and our thoughts into it is, okay, what do people want in this park? What are opportunities and challenges for each amenity? What can we do to make each park shine and meet county needs? And then finally, developing our concept plan. So I'll give you an example, at Coolwell Park, we're taking our lovely aerial and seeing, okay. At Coolwell Park, we're taking our lovely aerial and seeing, okay, you know, here's where we can put new amenities. Here's, you know, where we could improve something. And while this is already good use, we can further develop this so that it can better meet county needs. And then one thing we think, there's already a little bit of a trail, but I remember a lot of people say, we want trails. So we figured, let's make our master plan, put, add more trails. So then we developed that further, creating a little diagram of, okay, here's opportunities for where we can have activities within the park. Saying, okay, we'll put smaller things here, green link here. And then we led on to then further develop the park into each space and how each amenity would work, about how big to make it and how everything can fit in so that we can finally develop our lovely master plan. So in this, we refining our concepts into really well-designed master plans for each park. So for the master plan, creating each park in greater detail and also creating an inspiration board, again, drawing on that identity, creating, creating an overall look and feel for how we want each park to be. And then also developing a cost estimate. Again, this are approximate costs for what we think each amenity within each park would cost. And then also, again, since this is a long-term master plan, helping to create priorities, thinking, okay, which park and amenities we can develop first so that it'll have the greatest impact on the community and then going from there. And then finally, researching funding opportunities to help pay for the cost of all these lovely amenities and programs that we're proposing to you. So an example of our master plan is Coolwell Park. Just a little caveat, we don't propose multiple options in all of our parks. In Coolwell Park, we are gonna give you a couple of options because in this option, we see here the convenience center is currently located right here in the middle of the park. In this option, we are proposing to keep it there and then build our park around the existing convenience center. And then in an option two, we are proposing that we will eventually, over long-term future, is relocate the convenience center to somewhere else within the county and then use that space for more recreation. And then here's an overview. This is covered in the document of the master plan for each park. And our next steps is we're reviewing and seeking.
Go back to the previous slide, please.
Sure. If you'd like, I can zoom in on a specific part if you like.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So next steps, we're currently in review. We're reviewing and seeking comments on our draft. And we're hoping to complete the final draft and then have the county review and make comments on it. And then hopefully, upon our further presentation, we'll be able to finalize the document and then deliver that to you.
Go ahead, Mr. Martin.
I was just gonna say, thank you for being here and presenting that with Mr. Nixon. We've asked him to come back to us at our April, at our first meeting in April for consideration of adoption. So there are a couple of options that Mr. Nixon wanted the advisory committee to weigh in on and bring a recommendation back to the Board of Supervisors. So there's still some time for feedback. That's why we wanted to give you guys this opportunity to see this, to see where the progress was, give both Mr. Nixon, myself, and Hill Studios feedback. And this will come back to you at next month.
Board members, any questions? Mr. Martin?
Sure. So great work from Hill Studio, as always.
Thank you.
And I asked Mr. Nixon about this earlier, but I was a little taken aback that there was no mention of the Blue Ridge Rail Trail in the plan, which is a heavily utilized recreation area in the Roses Mill area of our county. So maybe recommend that you go back and take a look at that. And maybe also just give some, some credence or discussion to the Appalachian Trail and kind of all that. Because it is a Parks and Recreation.
Yes.
Right.
Right.
And I know Mr. Nixon said that he was gonna go back to the Parks and Rec Board about the, the building over here. I'd kind of like to know Hill Studios' take on it, whether it should come down or keep. I guess the good thing right now is we really don't have the money to tear it down, so that's, there you go.
Right, it's definitely something to consider. In fact, I can zoom in.
For those who don't understand what you're talking about.
Is the, the building over here at, what is he calling it?
Adjacent to the Sheriff's Office.
Adjacent to the Sheriff's Office, the little White House historic building. Great architecture. It probably could use some love.
Yes, I think it could use some love.
So the debate is to demolish it and have all of that architecture and history gone forever? Or to renovate and use as part of the park?
Right, there's definitely a debate, which is why, yes, we're proposing two options. So I think it's definitely something to consider.
But all in all, I would also be interested in the Parks and Recreation Board's kind of view on what should take priority, what should be worked on first in terms of all those improvements. Obviously, we can't do them all at once, but go from there. So thank you so much. Good work.
Thank you.
I do have one question. You know, the chamber is doing some tourism input for us. Did we consult, did we bring them in or consult with them at all? Yes? Okay. I'm sorry?
Yes, we got some input.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions?
No, ma'am. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
And if you have any other additional comments or questions that you think of, please feel free to relay them to us and then we can address them as well.
Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we're gonna move on to old business. Mr. Creasy.
Madam Chair, Board, good to see you all. A little chilly in here, if I might say. This, this is a tabled special exception hearing. This is a request brought to you by Poplar Church. The purpose of the special exception is to allow a digital sign with lights of changing degrees of intensity, brightness, and/or color at 1583 Richmond Highway, as further identified as TaxMap 112-8-26. There is a recommended motion from the Planning Commission, included in your item summary, and that you all tabled this at your February 18th, 2025 meeting. Staff can go over the staff report if you would like or if you have specific questions. We can also handle it that way at your pleasure, Madam Chair.
Yeah, we tabled it because Mr. Martin had some opinions and he was not here for that meeting. So, Mr. Martin?
Yep, sure. Thank you, Board members, for, for doing this, postponing it. Looking into this, I believe there's two other of these digital signs along 60. They're actually up 60 West, which is, I believe, one is at Sardis Grocery and one is at Peddler Fire Department.
Yes, sir.
So I did listen to the discussion on my way back from the conference. I don't really support taking all the restrictions off of these signs because you're going to greatly change the character of, of 60 in our rural areas if you do that in the A1 districts. So while I don't support that, I do understand changing technologies. It's also my understanding that VDOT used to regulate some of the things with these signs that they're no longer doing.
Yes, sir.
And I think if we had approved this the way it was recommended to us by the Planning Commission, we would have been remiss in getting those things done. So I, I would recommend approval of this, but with conditions. The first being that it has auto dimming capabilities at night. So the lumens are reduced down. So you don't have this blaring sign in motorists' faces. Also, the frequency of the change of message. I can't remember what VDOT is, but some other neighboring localities are no more than once every 20 seconds. And then this should already be, I think, a requirement, but no off, off-premises advertising. So it's not a billboard.
Correct.
So I would recommend approval with those three conditions.
Board members, any further questions? Yeah, I have mixed feelings about this because quite frankly, I don't want to, in our rural area, I don't want to go by and see a lot of blinking signs. But, yeah, it's just me.
No, I agree, but.
Madam Chair, if I, if I may, just so, to, to help, and maybe this is something that the Board and the Commission should take up. There's no mention of digital signs anywhere in our conference of plan. So when reviewing this special exception exercise, you, one, you refer to your comp plan. And if you don't have much there, we've got some stipulations that the Commission, Board, and staff review regarding a special exception. I believe it would be proactive, if you would like, for staff and the Commission to, to look at our sign ordinance. I believe there are some things outdated, as Mr. Martin brought up, how technology has changed. And I believe that we might be able to come up with a more sound ordinance to present to you for a potential approval at a later date.
Board members, what are your thoughts?
Madam Chair, obviously, I had some comments last time to see what we can do to minimize the amount of staff time associated with, with sign placement. But i- if we can find some sort of balance with what Mr. Creasy is proposing versus, I mean, obviously, our staff time is valuable. And I, I don't want to discount this because I agree 110% with you and Mr. Martin. We want to maintain, we want to maintain the, the aesthetics, for lack of better words, for rural Amherst County. God knows I do. So I, I guess I, I need to, you know, I, I can go either way now. I'm, I'm definitely not gonna push the issue as far as trying to come up with some sort of blanket coverage for sign approval. But I, I do want to make those comments based on what my comments were at the last time. So I, I, I'm gonna retract some of that, some of those feelings about that.
Also, Mr. Adams, you're gonna retract your feelings about staff time or about the subject?
Well, just having, well, obviously, we, we always, no, I'm not gonna retract my feelings about staff time because I think we always need to be, we, we need to make sure that we impress upon our staff, and not that they don't, but using our time wisely, right?
Yes.
And I think that's where I was coming from. It just, it, it seemed to be so much tied up in approving a sign. But, but I do agree with Mr. Martin.
Yeah, I, I think I would wait till after budget season.
Yes, sir.
That's just my opinion.
Do you think?
So.
Motion's on the floor.
Okay, motion on the floor.
And if they want to work on something after budget season, that'd be great.
A motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, no, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Creasy. All right, next we've got the IT strategic plan recommendation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Board. At a previous Board of Supervisors retreat, you all created a goal for the county to create an IT strategic plan. The funds for the IT strategic plan were approved for fiscal year '25 for a one-time cost of $49,990. The county has been through the procurement process and Virtual IT, Inc. has been selected as a vendor to develop an IT strategic plan for Amherst County. I have attached that proposed contract to this agenda item for the review. The contract is a fixed-price contract for the total of $49,620, which is within the budget that you guys set for this project. This project will take approximately five months to complete. A general scope of the project will include the contractor conducting an assessment on the county's IT infrastructure, needs and opportunities, disaster recovery, continuity of operation, and the overall direction and vision for the IT department. The contractor will meet with each department, as well as the Board of Supervisors, to determine needs and opportunities for individual departments and the county as a whole. The main deliverables that we're looking to get out of this contract would be a list of prioritized recommendations to the county along with estimated implementation timeframes and estimated costs. I do have Becky Gibbs and Ranny Grub from Virtual IT, Inc. here if you have additional questions about the process. But I'll open it up to you guys if you have any questions for myself or the IT Director.
I do have one question. It's probably in the contract, which I did not read all of. So is this just county? Or does this include our constitutionals as well?
I believe, I, I think there is a couple constitutionals that are included because we do provide services. I'd have to look at it, I'm sorry. For the Treasurer and Commissioner of Revenue. I think that's all of the constitutionals. Because our IT department for the county provides certain IT services for those departments.
We don't do anything for the Sheriff's Office or Commerce Attorney or?
They have their own.
They have their own, okay. That was my question. Board members? No questions? All right, is there a motion? Let me get back to.
I make a motion. I move to authorize the execution of the development of an IT strategic plan contract with Virtual IT, Inc. as presented.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Pew. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes. Thank you.
So, Mr. Bryant, is it, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Is it typical that, you know, even if we've budgeted for the money before you sign these contracts, it comes back to the Board?
The, I, I don't believe it even had to. We did it in this case.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next we've got the Union Hill Solar Farm. Mr. Bryant, can you lead that discussion, please?
Yes, ma'am. This, at your February 4th meeting, you directed staff to bring back and put a placeholder on this agenda to discuss, it's really two special exceptions that go back to 2020, 2020 and 2021. There's a gentleman here, David Tyree. He's an adjoining property owner. Mr. Robert Mann with AEP is also present. They're here to provide any information upon request. There's a quick timeline. I won't go over it in, in complete detail. But I want to point out, at your December 15th meeting in 2020, there was an original special exception approved for solar panels that are off Union Hill Road. You may remember, it was Soul America that provided that presentation to you. That property has been turned over to AEP for the use of the solar farm. This is currently the only solar farm that is, is active in Amherst County at this time. They came back to us in 2021 because the panels went from, they were gonna do, from a rotating tilt to a fixed tilt. Seemed like a minor change at the time, but we did require them to go back through the special exception process because that had changed. At the time, the original setback for solar panels was 15 feet. I'm gonna pass out to you and I'll ask if you'll pass this down and take a look at. The highlighted area, the, the lighter highlighted area are the two properties where the citizen is concerned about. And then the darker highlighted area is both the buffer and then the additional trees that were planted. So the, the Board did adopt and approve this solar farm to go in place. The county, since it was approved originally, went back and required AEP to plant an additional 114 trees. Those 114 trees are shown on your plan. Those are green giant arborvitae's that will grow somewhere between 50 and 60 feet tall. They were just planted this past growing season. So to date, they're about four or five feet tall. They haven't fully matured yet. I'm bringing this back to your attention as a request from a Board member. I don't know how much detail you want to go in, but that's hopefully adequate for now.
Mr. Martin, this is in your district.
It, it is in my district, Madam Chair. So Mr. Tyree, who is the adjacent owner, has contacted me, has contacted me several times. And his concern is, is with the condition that we put on it is that number seven, a vegetative buffer shall be required for any portions of the parcel on which the current or proposed buffer does not adequately, quote, "shield" neighboring properties from the proposed development. I've visited the property along with our county administrator and AEP representative. And yes, you can see it from Mr. Tyree's back deck. And. see it from Mr. Tyree's back deck. And, you know, from planting those trees, there's, it's going to take time for them to grow to 50 to 60 feet. I'm not sure what else the board can do, but I did offer to put it on an agenda to hear the full board because me as one member has no authority. It's the full board. So this is an opportunity for Mr. Tyree to speak to the board, and I believe also Mr. Mann is here from AEP, if you have any questions for him. But I'm not exactly sure what we can do to make it completely invisible, if you would ever make it completely invisible. So that's how it got here, and I appreciate the board's time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Martin. So, Mr. Tyree, is that Mr. Tyree?
Tyree.
Yeah. Is there anything you'd like to come up and say to the board?
Okay.
Yeah, we've got three minutes, so we've got a little timer here.
Like I'm District One, Mr. Martin's, and I appreciate that, Mr. Martin, what you put me up here to talk. What my concern was that my property was damaged from it, by seeing it. It's going to be reduced in price, okay? I was trying to sell a piece of property. I've got two properties that join it, okay? And I know that Mr. Martin and Mr. Mann came out with Mr. Bryant. At that time, we stood in the backyard, and I said, would it ever be shielded? He said, no, okay, it's too high up. The elevation is too, okay? So if it can't be shielded, Mr. Mann and I were talking settlement, okay? That came into the thing, on the phone. But all of a sudden, this letter came out, and I don't know if you've got a copy of it or not, but it was put out by Mr. Creasy, I think, and it was about that they are full compliance, full compliance. Well, full compliance to me means that that vegetated shield or buffer that shields me from it would be in effect, shield me from it. Now, what people are saying, it probably will not ever shield me, but I'm 78 years old, and 50 years is a long time. I'll never live that long. So what I'm asking the board to do, and then y'all say you don't know what you can do, well, what has been done by different boards has harmed me in a monetary way. So I'm just suggesting, what do you want to do? I'll ask y'all. Now, Mr. Martin's seen it, Mr. Bryant's seen it, but I don't know if anybody else has been down there to see it. But there was conditions put out when it was built, and I asked on that day, it was back in July of 2021, I asked a question in there at Planning and Zones meeting, who's going to take care of anything goes wrong at this site? It was Mr. Ryan Peters from Soul America. He spoke and said, you go see the board, you see the county, because they have a huge buffer we put up, a huge bond we put up to pay for that. Now, was there ever a bond put up? I don't know. There was a stormwater bond put up, $25,000, I think it was. But I'd ask that question, was there ever a bond put up to pay for any damages or any things were done?
Mr. Bryant, do you know the answer to that?
Historically, counties, we require bonds for things like erosion, sediment control, landscaping. We don't put up bonds for monetary damages.
And, Mr. Popovich, I play an attorney on TV, but how, I don't see how, I'm with Mr. Martin, I don't see how we can get in the middle between a contract between two private parties.
Well, my understanding is not necessarily that there's any kind of a contract issue, but the issue really is, as I understand it, is that the gentleman is asking for a monetary payment for some alleged damages. Now, the only time that monies are provided to anyone for alleged damages is through the legal process of filing a lawsuit and going through that whole process. I'm not sure, you know, if that's something that's on his mind or not, but quite frankly, I think that the county has done everything that it is required to do under the law and has provided conditions that apparently the developer has met and has now exceeded by adding additional buffers. So I'm not, I'm not sure there's anything else that the county really can do at this point. Now, clearly, it's up to the Board of Supervisors. If you feel some level of monetary compensation and some release agreement be entered into between the county and the gentleman, that's your prerogative, but it's not something that I would recommend.
Thank you, sir. Where did, do we typically use the word "shield" when we...
It's, I'll take that. It's not, it's not a word we use in the ordinance. It was a word that was used in a condition for this particular one.
And I actually looked that up, Madam Chair. So the definition of "shield" is to, the verb is to cut off from observation, hide. If you look at "screen," it is a growth of stand of trees, shrubs or plants, protective formation of truths, well, it's not this, something that covers or disguises the true nature. So essentially, it's the planting of ornamental trees and things. So I think, moving forward, we should use the word "screen" instead of "shield." You know, from my approach, I don't think it's by any means that the county should be looking at any type of monetary damages. I believe there were some discussions between AEP and the owner. For some reason, those broke down. I'm not sure what that is. Mr. Tyree has implied that it was a letter sent by Mr. Creasy, basically saying that they've planted their buffer, and I don't, I'm not sure if that's the case or not. But really, from a ordinance standpoint, from a site plan standpoint, you know, looking forward, if we have to do this again, we should probably see some cross-sections and elevations. That was probably missed during the planning phase, and, Mr. Bryant, that was yours, but can't change it. I don't see the solar panels being ripped out, and it's unfortunate, but I believe it's worth doing the fall, and we can agree to disagree on that, but hopefully during the spring and summer, it will improve somewhat. But yes, Mr. Tyree does see them. And I just, I've been out there. I've been doing this a long time. I do not see a finite solution on it. So that's where we are. I really think it's a matter between AEP and the private property owner. And AEP is here. I don't know if they'd like to say anything or not, but that's what we...
I would like, is it okay if I address that? Mr. Martin said it was mine. I would like to, I feel like I'm inclined to address that. The requirement was a 15-foot buffer setback. The ordinance since changed after this was approved. It was mine. The 15-foot setback was in place. It was on the site plan. The condition was brought to my attention the night of the meeting. So it was a condition that, so I just, I want to be clear that we weren't trying to not be diligent with our work. We felt like it met the site plan when it was approved.
What I'm saying, Mr. Bryant, is, and this goes to staff time, but details matter, and if you had, if we had been looking at it, you know, you're looking at it on site plan in two dimensions, right? It's flat. That makes perfectly sense. It makes the setback. But when you're standing on Mr. Tyree's deck, looking across the hill to where they started putting those solar panels, it's level, or the solar panels are actually taller. There's no way you're going to screen that, right? So if we had known that, maybe we would have required that to be pushed back further. I don't know. But that's where we are. I'm not sure what the board can do, but I told Mr. Tyree I would bring it, give him an opportunity to speak, and that's where we are. And I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think that we've certainly accomplished that. Mr. Tyree, I wish we had better news for you, but that's, I completely agree with what Mr. Martin says.
Well, you know, like I'm saying, you've got Mr. Mann, he could speak too. He could speak too.
Mr. Mann, I'm going, soon as, yeah.
Because he was telling me on the phone, okay? We had some discussion.
Yeah.
But the letter says they're in full compliance. Full compliance means, I thought, if it's going to shield me, or eventually, or whatever, it's going to shield me. I don't know. But they're saying, no, it's never going to shield you, okay? So how does that work in with me, working with somebody else now, AEP? They're saying, hey, we're in full compliance. The letter says we're in full compliance. Now, I know the attorney, he's, his name's on that letter, it's with another eight people. Mr. Bryant's on that thing. Mr. Creasy's on that thing. I never got that letter. I was blown back when Mr. Mann said, we're not discussing it anymore because of the letter, the letter. That's what he said. And I'll let him speak to that.
Friend of mine said, the only place you're going to find flat land in Amherst County is underneath your dinner table.
Well, that's what you said. That's what you said.
I don't see how he could ever, quote, "screen" something, but anyway, see it here or there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mann?
Good afternoon, board. Thank you for being here. I'm Rob Mann with Appalachian Power Company, External Affairs. I do want to clear up something. Air Communications, I think I may have confused Mr. Tyree. When speaking about the letter, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that AEP does feel we are in compliance, based on the letter. As, you know, we have operating a solar facility beside Mr. Tyree's property, which he is, you know, visibly upset that he can see it. In good faith, we attempted to negotiate a settlement agreement, which is, as the county attorney pointed out, we weren't obligated to do, but we were trying to come up with a solution to the problem. We're, we're pretty far apart on the, you know, the dollar figure for a settlement agreement, and that's where communications kind of stopped, as far as that. So we were unable to meet, and I've never had a full demand from Mr. Tyree. We've talked about that several times. In theory, I think I know where he's going with damages, you know, based on Virginia statute and diminution of value type things, but we never were able to agree on a final dollar figure for a settlement.
So, Madam Chair, just to be clear, Mr. Mann, the letter that Mr. Creasy sent you is not what stopped negotiations. You're saying it's because you are so far apart.
That's, that is correct, yes. The letter, like, I just wanted to make, I had not provided that. Their, their project team with their renewal, with AEP, sent me this October 18th, as far as the buffer that we were, had satisfied the requirement, and that, I just wanted to reiterate that to Mr. Tyree. So I apologize for confusion in that conversation, but...
And my next question is, in a directive, it's really, truly just a question. Do you see conversations moving forward with such a settlement, or have y'all given a number and you're done with it?
No, we still talk, but like I say, we are limited to what we can do, and so it, it may not be satisfactory, the dollar figure, that AEP is willing to settle.
I don't, Mr. Tyree, do you have something else you want to say? Make it brief, but come on up here to, so everybody can hear you.
I wanted to speak to the settlement part of it. When it first came up and Mr. Mann and I were talking, there was something that came out over the internet or whatever, had to adjust something like this, the rate, 7% to 10%, and that's what was quoted, okay, 7% to 10%. But when the letter came out, and I talked back to Mr. Mann, it dropped down to a half a percent. Now, that's where we're at, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Martin, you got anything else you want to add?
Well, I mean, I don't think it's really appropriate for this board to be getting into negotiations on what the property owner and AEP will or will not do or accept, but I think what I'm hearing from the board is that it's definitely in your court, and this board is kind of saying, they've planted the buffer, they've done what was required of them, understanding that the screen's going to take time to grow, which all vegetation takes time to grow, but there's really, I don't see anything else this board can do.
As far as I'm concerned, we finalized all action on this matter. Do you agree?
I do.
Okay, all right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick, sorry for the interruption. I have an appointment at 6:30 that it's going to take me an hour and a half to get there. Would it be okay if I exited a little early from this?
Board members, you need anything from the attorney?
I think I need to get him a Microsoft Teams account.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
All right, next, we're going to move on to Emergency Services Council, Chief.
Good evening, board. I will try to be brief. I know we have got a busy night yet ahead of us. I won't pull up anything unless you have specific questions, but I just want to kind of take you back in time. In 2023, actually, 2022, before I arrived here in beautiful Amherst County, you all, as a board, had decided to ask Virginia Department of Fire Programs to come in and do an evaluation of fire and EMS in the county. That took place in 2023. We had great dialogue with our volunteers. You all met. We all sat around, came up with some strategic planning. Part of that was to develop standard operating guidelines. We have diligently done that. We've worked side by side with all of our volunteer departments. We've been meeting monthly to accomplish that over the last year, and we think we put about eight really strong operating guidelines in front of you. We know there's more to come, but this was just a, we wanted you all to memorialize this and codify your support for the work that the Emergency Service Council has completed. So I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Board members, any questions?
Not really questions, but more statements. And Chief, I apologize for not getting these to you. I think it's a great start. I think there are some grammatical errors that need to be addressed. There's a few other things, like brush fires, it doesn't mention eye protection. So I would fully recommend we adopt these with the understanding that we can correct some of that stuff moving forward, or we can bring them back.
Yeah, I would not be comfortable with that, because what if we found something that operationally you want to change?
I don't think it's operationally. It's just like, required to perform fire rescue activities will be issued a complete set if structural, it should be of structural, that meets or excess should be exceeds the national fire, and there's things like "will", when I think it should be "shall," where full protective clothing, so.
That's significant, a "will" and a "shall."
Well, at least you know I read them.
That's right. No doubt in my mind. Are we on any kind of timeline here?
No, I mean, our volunteers are anxious to get these out. You know, I guess what I'm hearing is you want to make, send corrections back and then come back to you for approval, or would you like us to take them to the Emergency Service Council for approval? It's really whatever your pleasure is.
I tell you, as emergency services, I'm going to defer to our two guys who are professionals in that.
So I'm going to make a few comments on that, and no disrespect to anyone, but the Emergency Services Council has been working on this since January of 2024, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We set a pretty strict timeline because I did not want them to kick the can down the road, which we're famous for doing, right? So that was done, and we have a finished product. Now, I say a finished product. As far, any time in emergency services, like anything we do, it's going to be a working document moving forward, right? This is not, this is where we're at. The other thing that each one of the Emergency Services Council members were tasked to do was to take these protocols back to their individual departments and get the buy-in from their membership. I just, I want to address that, but at the same time, I, we, we don't need to kick this can very long. I know, and Mr. Martin, and I'm going to take some accountability for this as well, so I should have caught some of these grammatical things, but I think that stuff can be addressed. If we task that, if we don't feel comfortable doing that today, that's fine. We can't kick this can very long, because here's, here's what, here's what's got to happen. We have got to be able to put these procedures in place to give Chief Beam and the other fire chief the meat and potatoes to go forth when, when there are things that are done that are not in accordance to the standards that we need to practice, in unsafe conditions, or a host of other things that I can address, but I won't get into today, to address those issues in a firm way to keep our people safe. And that's what these are designed to do, period. No more discussion about it. So if we want, if we want to give him until the next meeting to fix this and bring it back, I have no issues with this, but... But we don't need to drag this crap out for another two or three months because I'm not going to get into specific details, but this has got to be done to where we can hold people accountable. Period.
I don't disagree with you wholeheartedly and, well, I don't disagree with you for one. The fact of it coming back and getting buy-in from the departments is fairly debatable and that goes with who the representative was to the ESC, which is not me. Okay? And what I'm telling you is, I did start reading them. And when I read them in preparation for this meeting, I found errors with it.
Sure.
I'm telling you, I had the time to read it because I knew I had to do it. I'm pointing out the errors and the discrepancies in it. You either want to hear it or you don't. But there's issues with it. Okay?
So let's fix them.
Absolutely fix them. That's what I tried when I first said, I said, if we want to adopt them and put them in place with the understanding, we can correct the grammatical and, and some other things, I'm fine with that. Right? And then Madam Chair said, oh, no. So, I mean, it shouldn't be this big debate. I mean, obviously, these are going to be some living, breathing documents.
Right, right.
So I'm fine with putting them in place, but the errors and omissions need to be corrected.
Sure. So how would you suggest, Mr. Martin, going forth and doing that? Because here's where, here's where my concern lies. This made it through the Emergency Services Council and to here. So who, no, I'm being respectful. I mean, if you've noticed, who, who do we want to correct those errors?
And we can go back and, we can put eyes on it again. You know, that's.
Chief, I would think you're absolutely fully capable of fixing this. I mean, the grammatical stuff.
Sure. And I can consult with Chief Martin on specifics that he has if you're good with that, Chief.
Absolutely. And I was going to call you, but I was sick yesterday.
All good. All good.
I mean, I personally feel like it should be fixed grammatically and then adopted because that way it's in the record and it's completely accurate, you know?
My old saying, you can do it right, you can do it fast. And I'd like to.
Hey, I agree with that, but nothing about this has been fast. I mean, no disrespect, but I mean, it has. I mean, the ESC has spent a lot of time putting these documents together. Mr. Beam, do you feel like, and I'm willing to assist Mr. Martin, if we can come together and discuss these, because I don't think it's going to be anything of any significance that we need to go back to the Emergency Service Council with.
Yeah, I potentially may be not here for the next meeting, so maybe the first meeting in April, if that would be agreeable.
You okay with that?
I'm fine with that, yep.
Okay.
So I mean, I'm okay delaying it till then. I just, I, I don't want you to think we're trying, I'm trying, promoting halfway doing this. We've just got to get to some place.
All right, why don't we memorialize this with a motion that we're just going to table it for now and the date that we're going to expect it to be ready.
All right, so I'll make the motion that we table it till the first meeting in April. And I'll extend that as long as you're good with it, Mr. Martin, that you and I will coordinate with Mr. Beam to meet to address the concerns as far as some of the, I guess, grammatical issues.
Okay.
You okay with that?
Absolutely.
All right, so that's my, that's my motion, Mr., Madam Chair.
All right, motion on floor by Mr. Adams. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion passed. Thank you, Chief. Moving on, we've got county administrators' report.
Well, the big news you've all been waiting for is the, the Amherst County rollout of the Citizens Academy starts tomorrow. We, this came from your board retreat, and I want to pause right here because I started looking back at the agenda and it won't take long, but there's three items on this agenda. I didn't realize it until just now. There's three items on this agenda today that all came out of your board retreat from August of 2023 that staff's been working on. So kudos to staff for keeping at it. The first thing was the Parks and Rec Master Plan came out of your board retreat. The second thing was the IT Strategic Plan. And then this third is the Citizens Academy. That starts tomorrow. It'll start right here. We've continued to get more and more people that are interested. It's an 11-week session. It features departments and agencies in Amherst County. It will conclude here at a May 20th Board of Supervisors meeting. We'll go into great detail. We have a lot of detail on the website. There's an one-page application with detailed class schedule, where people will go, but they're going to go to places like the library, Parks and Recreation. They're going to get on the bus and travel around to different places in the county. Mr. Ayers is going to take folks around, Brad Beam. So citizens are going to have an opportunity to have a whole understanding of where their taxpayer money goes, what it is that we do, the services that we provide, and a more in-depth look. So it starts tomorrow. It's not too late. People can just come in tomorrow. We'll hand them an application then. There's no cost. It's free to citizens and it's just a service that we're providing. And it was at a request from you, the board, for staff to do this.
That is much appreciated. I'm glad to see that there's been such an interest in it from, from our citizens. I mean, that's, it's a really cool program and they'll learn a lot about how local government works. All right, the county attorney has departed, so nothing from him. Mr. Martin, you want to talk to us about Parks and Rec?
Yep, well, obviously, you saw the Parks and Rec Master Plan that they had been working on. April 5th, I believe it is, as part of the Amherst County Day at Sweetbrier, the Parks and Rec Board will be doing a Easter egg hunt for the community. And also something you should be familiar with, Madam Chair, is an AARP grant they put in place for kayaks at Mill Creek Lake.
Yes.
Very good stuff.
That's it.
You got me at AARP. All right, thank you, Mr. Martin. Next, we're going to open Citizen Comment back up. Anybody else who want to speak? All right, seeing none here and none, we will close Citizen Comment and move to members, matters, matters from members of the board. Mr. Adams.
Nothing at this time, Madam Chair.
Mr. P.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Martin, and I have nothing. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion on floor by Mr. Adams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are now adjourned. Don't forget, we got a budget meeting.
Like a five or 10-minute recess?
Yeah, let's have a five-minute recess.